Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting number twenty-one of the year. There are no amendments to the agenda, so could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, or I'll second that.
Counselor Henshaw, thank you, Counselor Paquette. Paquette, any comment? No questions?
No.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Uh, next, we have adopt the draft minutes from the regular council meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll adopt the draft minutes of October seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three of the regular council meeting.
That's.
Thank you, Counselor Burris. Thank you, Counselor Paquette. Any questions or comments?
I just had one little comment. I just am trying to find it here. Sorry, I usually put this out. But anyway, it was under the motion uh regarding the one on the corner of Francis Avenue and eight. Um, it just says to rezone from industrial to um multi-res and it should be institutional, I believe.
That's correct. Thank you.
Um, and I still can't, I'm not sure what motion number that was, sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Henshaw. Any more questions or comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here. Motion to pay the open payables in the amount of three hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the open payables. I'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Henshaw. Thank you, Counselor Paquette. Any questions?
Um, not for me, really, but um.
Just gonna say point out the big one?
Yeah, there's obviously like a giant one on here, uh, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-nine after the.
Yes, your worship, for the record, that is superior roofing, and that is the the payment for the last payment for the for the progress payment for the rep center, and that was the, and the rest of it was the roof at Ski Shelling.
Thank you. I have no other questions. Thanks.
Look, Counselor Henshaw, any more questions? Well, all in favor? Carried. All right. Next on the agenda, we have Elevator Yukon, Jordan Stackhouse, to update us a little on our strategic plan. Good evening.
Hello.
Hey, everyone. How's it going?
I'm doing good.
Good. Everybody hanging in there, like getting back to the groove after summer and all that. Um. I had a babe, or we had a baby, so I'm like, I'm like right there with you. I'm like deer in the headlights right now.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Stackhouse.
Thanks. Thanks, guys. I totally appreciate it. Yeah, so I guess like, um just wanted to revisit the council's strategic plan, and I think it's like a good time. We, we touched base on it, I think July fourth was the day we kind of had like a half-day session, and then council recess and me having the baby in September and all that kind of stuff, and here we are just kind of revisiting it now. So instead of kind of uh just bringing forward a document to a regular council meeting, I just wanted to touch base with council at a committee meeting. Um, just make sure we're on the same page. So I did a bit of a memo for you guys. Um, Cam may have added to it, I'm not sure, but um, just assume everybody's read their package, right? So you guys know it's in it, of course. Um, but basically, like, there's, there's lots of like your, your guys' strategic plan was based around implementing parts of your official community plan, and we've made a ton of progress. Uh, you guys, sorry, have made a ton of progress. Um, you know, I don't, I don't think we need to kind of go over everything, but Cam, I, I would like to focus on where there's still um opportunity, or where we identified opportunity or areas for action back in July. But I'll just say like, um, Cam and the staff have done, and me and council and the community. Um, congrats to every, like, everybody in Watson Lake. I think, you know, back when we, we did this a little bit late with you guys coming on, on your term, but um, staff really knocked it out of the park and got a lot of things done, and I think there's some, some things that even weren't on there that the staff managed to accomplish. Um, you know, that are moving forward some strategic priorities, and I, and, and you'll, it's just really great to see that. So kudos to the the, the, the global town of Watson Lake and everybody in it. Um, you know, and, and I think supporting council and like getting some of their priorities done, like I, I had to like ask Cam twice because I heard there were streetlights going in, like, I don't, I don't know.
It's true.
It's happening.
So like, I think that's like eight, eight, like seven, eight years, guys, of like lobbying and, and keeping that. Um, and if Counselor Slager was here tonight, I would, I would give him a, a high five through Zoom because uh you know, he's really the one that said, it's gotta stay out there, gotta stay on there, and lo and behold, you know, um, you guys got it done, so. Um, yeah, uh, we can, we can kind of look at the areas for action, or, and, and I guess just a couple areas that council, after when we touched base in July, just didn't think were so much of a priority, and I think like, what I just asked council to think about is that you guys are coming into, to the last year of your term. Um, those of you who haven't been on council before, kind of, we're kind of, you know, uh, starts to dry up, like, so to speak. Um, you know, uh, heading into the election, and so if we look at that kind of time horizon we're dealing with, guys, like there is not a ton of time to, to get things done, so I think it's important to be focused and um, you know, be thinking about the next council, and hopefully that's all you um that are gonna be sitting, that are sitting here today are, are gonna want to run again. But you know, what, what can we set them up with? How like, what, what's something important that we wanted to accomplish in this term that, you know, we're still working on, and I think, you know, it's, it's really like those one or two things that we'd be looking for. Um, you know, to, to set administration on a, on a good direction and, and try to provide some results for council this year on your strategic priorities. So with that, I'll just kind of name these off, and then we can open up for discussion if that's cool. Um, so just areas for action, so trail network and signage came up a lot. Um. And it came up in a few different areas as well. It came up in the, in the context of like beautification, and there may have even been some projects that were kind of started but not finished. So that was one area of opportunity that uh came up. Uh, beautification, and I think Counselor Paquette might, might have been championing this, but we didn't kind of we just said we wanted to do a beautification project, and we didn't kind of identify like what that was. Um, but that was something that came up when we talked in July. The Community Safety Plan, which I think you guys are actually like on your way or have started that. Um, and that would lead into the next one as well, which is engagement with LFN. Um, so those are two priorities. Um, asset management and the financial plan, that was another area that I think there's definitely like been like progress on all these, but maybe some you want to just like really focus on. Um, the recreation, like master plan, or like a community-wide recreation plan. Uh, wildfire protection and emergency planning, and affordable housing. And so yeah, we've gotten up, we've gotten at some of these, um, and I'll open it up for discussion in just one second. Um, and then some things that we discussed that council were just like, I don't know what to do with that right now, or it's not a top priority for us, was um, egg, like agriculture-related stuff. Um, and, and I think the recommendation was like, do a study to see how like the town can support agriculture. Or better support agriculture, and I think council was just not feeling that one at this point in time. And then um air quality and wood smoke was kind of one that council didn't see maybe a ton of value in tackling kind of rate at this moment, so. Um, that's kind of where we left it in July, guys, and I'd just like to check in with you and see where your thinking's at right now, like do, where we have those areas for action, does that kind of represent some of the things you want to accomplish? What are the most important? And I guess if anything's missing, because like, it's been a few months since July, and things could, could have changed as well, right? And maybe we need to focus on something else. So with that, I'll, I'll just kind of open the floor for discussion.
Thank you very much, Jordan, and uh I like the list of accomplishments. It's uh FD, and uh I know everybody's been working hard on those. I would just start by saying that that Community Safety Plan and Engagement with LFN has always been a priority for me, so I do believe we're on the right step with that Community Safety Plan. Uh, we had a great meeting not too long ago with uh, the group and Gina Nagano and the chief and Deudenna, and I thought it was very uh, it was, it was a great meeting, and I think everybody is on board to see that happen. Um, now we just need action, so. And that would be great for me. I want to see that happen. Um, with that being said, I'll lea- uh, leave it to Lauren if you want to add anything.
Yeah, so um, I think that, yeah, awesome to see all the things that we've accomplished so far. Um, like you said, there's quite a few things that um are still on the list. Um, I think that they're all priorities. Um, but I guess, did you ask us to pick a top two? For some reason, I feel like you asked us to do that. Anyway. Um, I did. Um. You know, there, like I said, they're, they're all priorities for me. Um, my top two uh were wildfire protection and emergency planning and the Community Safety Plan, but like uh Mayor Urban said, you know, we're kind of underway with the Community Safety Plan now, I believe. I think that, that hopefully we're cautiously optimistic that that's gonna move along, so um with that being said, I'm replacing that, my, my second priority with asset management and long-term financial plan, just because I think without those two things, the wildfire protection and emergency plan and the financial plan, um if we burn down, or if we don't have any money left, everything else is irrelevant completely, so um that's just kind of where I'm at with that. Like, if we have to pick two big things to focus on, that's where my that's where I'm at.
Thank you, and I, I did ask that, so you're not, you're not crazy.
Okay, thanks. I just can't find it now, so I'm like, am I crazy that I made that up? Yeah.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with the wildfire protection and emergency plan. Uh, just, we need that, and the working with LFN, I think we did a, it was a really good meeting we had, and it was a really big step. I just want to make sure that that continues because um I, I, I just think that's really important for us to move forward. So.
Thank you.
For me, some of these areas of action, we've actually started on some of these, like the trail network and signage. I mean, there's some funding that Tiffany's looking into in respect to that beautification project. We're also working with Daily Denna to do a collage on the Northern Light Center, so something there, a mural there. So I mean, there's the Community Safety Plan, yep, we are working with we worked with the House of Wolf, and that was great engagement with LFN and Daily Denna during that period. Uh, there's always room for more engagement with LFN, but hopefully, this might spearhead some some kind of work with them that they would have confidence to be able to work with us on other issues. I mean, asset management and financial plan, that's obviously something that is hugely important. The sustainability of the town, absolutely. Recreation master plan, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. Wildfire protection was one of the ones that I put my dot on, that there was no other dots other than Thomas, and I put our dots on there, but yeah, if we don't protect what we have, then we're really in trouble, so that one is hugely important to me. Affordable housing, I mean, we have got the land now released, so I mean, we do have the capacity to have some kind of, you know, so some of these we're already all working on, I think, since some little bits. Um, but yeah, I mean, I really feel that we could be way more sustainable if we had great engagement with LFN, and I certainly think that wildfire is really important, too, so.
One thing that uh nobody's really touched on is the affordable housing and our application for the uh accelerator fund, and um and our new lots that'll be developed. Apparently, not this spring, but hopefully the spring after.
Some time in the future.
But uh hopefully the price of those isn't outrageous, and hopefully people actually want to build a house. I know there's some development happening in town, which is great. Um, it might be minimal, but maybe with the uh approval of that accelerator fund, we can really kick that into high gear.
Awesome. Yeah, counsel, and thank you, and, and just like, yeah, I think just for some context, and, and maybe people on the gallery or on the phone who aren't listening, like um, strategic priorities are really these kind of like forward-thinking priorities that we, we want to kind of tackle to you know, and like Counselor Paquette says, like ensure sustainability of the community and and really ensure that we're, we're forward-looking as well, and so I think it is important to also mention that there's the day-to-day things, um, and, and a lot of these strategic priorities also include that, too. Um, so, for example, the town staff might get a grant funding or might incorporate trail maintenance within their regular day-to-day work, and that gets that council strategic priority as well. Um, as well as fulfills the operational needs, so um what I'm hearing is like um, Community Safety Plan and Engagement with LFN kind of is that the vehicle right now, guys? Is that like fair to say? Like, of, of course, we're, you know, open to all opportunities, but is that kind of where to put the resources and focus, like at that point, is, at this point, sorry, is that, is that correct?
I believe so. I think that would definitely help us finish on a strong note. I think we have, it's not that these other items are gonna fall to the wayside, but to put a little more pressure on those two and really uh you know, get some, get some engagement with the community as a whole, including LFN, and really see some growth in that manner would really look, it would be great to see that happen during our time.
For sure, and yeah, it's important to remember, like, we, we have control over certain things, like what we put as priorities and, and, and what we put our resources and our time and effort to, and kind of whether things happen or not, some of that's out of our control, and I think um, you know, this discussion today, and when we, we adopt the amended strategic plan, it just it just informs administration, like what council is hoping to accomplish, right, and and ensures that they can, um, but they're, you know, give council the resources and information that they need to be able to do that, whether or not the thing happens, sometimes out of our control, but you know, just setting those priorities and making it clear to administration, like, you know, if possible, this is what council would like to we'd really like to, you know, move the Community Safety Plan as, as much forward as we can. Um, you know, that's really what we're emphasizing for administrations. Does that make sense for everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if you look back on our strategic plan, there's lots of things that we articulated, they were priorities, but we articulated a lot of stuff, and if you look back in it, we are actually working on ultimately a lot of that stuff, and it just sort of some of it just kind of happened, you know, like it wasn't like we were planning it, it just sort of happened with other.
But we did plan at Council, Paquette, that's beautiful.
I know, I know, but I was just saying, like, we have it in here, but it wasn't like a high priority, and we didn't have like a budget, you know, for that or whatever, right? Things kind of, like, because Daily Denna approached us about, you know, doing a mural or something that would, you know, showcase you know, a joint venture between us and, and the First Nations, which I think was great, and but we weren't planning that. They approached us, so that's what I'm talking about. So it was really nice to see going through this and reading it, just to see how some of these things have actually are materializing that you know, we didn't make really high priorities, so it was nice to see that.
I will just.
Yeah, and hopefully you can see like over time, like, just the progress that's made, and I think, like, when we're working on these long-term things, sometimes it's difficult to see like day in, day out, but like, when you kind of look back and go, holy shit, or sorry, holy, we had a list of thirty things we were trying to and really, we, we did it, right? Like, um, you know, kudos to you guys.
Uh, I was just gonna say, you know, it'd be nice to see what uh this strategic plan looked like the first time you made one for us, because I guarantee you, it is not as high level as this. We were looking for small, quick decisions. A lot of it was um, day-to-day, and a lot of it was, we are in trouble, this financial plan is not working, and it was, uh, it was a, a much different picture than what we're working on today, so. Um, so thank you for that, and um it's just great to see that we have these big items that could really improve our community.
For sure. So guys, next steps here, like, I just want to bring, like, let me just revise uh what we have there to bring something back that um emphasizes um the Community Safety Plan, the wildfire emergency plan, and, and uh, the relationship with LFN, and I also did hear, like, I think what we can do is like invest, sorry, I don't want to speak for Cam, but what might be feasible is like investigating, you know, whether, how we can get started on the financial plan. I, I probably think that's longer term than, than your guys' mandate, but um, you know, we can definitely look into that, and I just look, uh, bring that back to a council meeting for you guys to adopt, and then that's kind of out there for the public to know what you guys are working on.
Great. That is awesome. And I think you're sticking around for a bit.
Yeah, I'll stick around.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Um, next on our agenda, we have both an appointment of Joey Turpin. Welcome to Watson Lake. We're very excited to have you. You want to come on, you can just stay right there.
That's as far as I can go.
Oh, yeah.
Well, sure. Sure.
Hi.
This is your oath. Just want to leave it out loud, raise your hand.
I, Joey Turpin, of the Town of Watson Lake in the Yukon Territory, solemnly promise and declare that that I will tell, or sorry, that I will well and truly serve His Majesty King Charles as a designated municipal officer in the position of Director of Protective Services for the Town of Watson Lake. With favor or affection, malice, or ill will, that I will honor and respect the mission, goals, purposes, and policies of the Town of Watson Lake, and that while I continue to hold a set position of Director of Protective Services, I will, to the best of my skill and knowledge, discharge all the duties and responsibilities thereof faithfully and according to law.
That Queen of the Republic's in the ring.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome. Um, because we have a new fire chief amongst us, uh, we must also make a motion to rescind the, the past fire chief. Um, Colin O'Hara, and I would need a motion to rescind the previous fire chief.
I'll make a motion to rescind the appointment of the previous fire chief, Colin O'Hara.
Counselor Henshaw, thank you, Counselor Burris. All in favor? Carried. And again, congratulations. Welcome to Watson Lake. We're happy to have you.
I'll be here.
Great.
Some.
And can we have a motion to approve the oath of appointment?
I'll make a motion.
To affirm the oath of appointment?
I can do it.
Too bad.
And thank you, Counselor Burris, and thank you, Counselor Paquette.
Thank you.
Favor?
Aye.
Carried.
Yeah. We're excited.
Yeah.
Excited for camp.
Yeah.
I think he's excited, too, so.
Absolutely. Okay, with that being said, C.A. Lockwood.
Yes, I am excited.
Good.
Um, although, um, for the amount of paperwork he's been putting across my desk. And, and yeah, I hope he runs out of steam. It is, it's very wonderful. Um, yeah, so it's been a busy few weeks, I guess, since the last meeting. Um, as council knows, we're in, it's that wonderful time called budget prep time, and it's been consuming a lot of hours of staff debate back and forth, so um I've been told that I will have um, proposed budgets in my hand uh for Thursday, and it'll come, they, they'll come to council for first reading on the twenty-first, so that way they can go to the town hall meeting on the twenty-seventh. And in the meantime, we'll have a budget meeting, council.
Okay.
And then that'll all come back for the committee, after the public hearing, it'll come back for the committee, the whole meeting, uh, first meeting in December. So, and then we'll be looking for um second and third readings for the last meeting in December, because we have to have uh operational budget passed by the end of December.
Good.
Um, so if we do it on the nineteenth, that's, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's passed by the thirty-first, and if there, if we run into a stumbling block along the way, um, I would just need a motion for provisional ONM to, so we can get operating and continue operating in January first, but um, my goal, um, working with finance and the managers is that we present our final project, our final product going in, so we're not have to come back again in January and start the process through all those. Again, we're trying to get things done. That way, when we start working on spending, it's spending, so we had, same with capital, because that way gives us that much more time to deal with stuff, and I know, your worship, you're gonna be away in January, and there's other commitments from other counselors, so I prefer to get it all behind us and and get things rolling, like, so.
Good.
And I do have another exciting announcement is public waste drop-off area construction started this morning.
Nice.
They uh arrived in town yesterday um with their mobile, and uh they started on site this morning, and they're gonna work probably a week or two, based on whatever the weather does, if it keeps holding like this, uh, they figure they can make some progress. And then uh ha- very happy to say is that their equipment will be on site, so we know we have them coming back in the spring. Um, so yeah, it'd be really nice to get that project done, and I must thank Jordan for all his assistance in uh getting this going. Uh, so we're proceeding on that. Um, I think we only really have uh two uh big capital purchases from this year that we haven't been able to action yet, and one is the landfill crawler. It's approved by council. Unfortunately, we've hit a little snag at the community Canada Community Build Fund approvals, um, and they bounced it back first, so Shannon and I met with them um last Friday, and uh sorted out the terminology that they required in the, in the application, and Shannon and some of them, it's the resubmitting it, and with full confidence, it's gonna be approved through the justice. Okay, so, um, so which is nice. Um and uh also, you'll see tonight is the modification to the capital budget, and that incorporates everything that councils approved through this last year, since uh the capital budget was approved, so um things like um the difference, like public waste drop-off and those type of things, that all those things have been motioned by council already, but formality, we had to get it through, we have to get it through before the end of December, uh, to satisfy video on our spending. So, uh, so that's on tonight as well. Um other things that we have on the go right now, um, we're still actively cha-chasing that trail money, and uh I was really ha-hoping to have a picture for you tonight, but um unfortunately, the installation of Watson Lake, home of the Signpost Forest, the world-famous Signpost Forest, uh, will be going up on Friday.
Yes.
Well, it was slated to go up before today's meeting, and it got delayed because I wanted to have that picture on the screen to show everybody, because it's been a long time coming as well. Um RCMP, I've had a, a few meetings with them. Um they have some transfers coming up, the corporals leaving uh shortly, maybe within the next week. Um, and they have another new member coming in in December, and another recruit, I think, coming in soon in the new year. Um, the corporal's position, that might be the tricky one, uh, it might not get filled. They've found a successful candidate, but it's, it's the releaseability, so it, they might not be here till spring. So, um, there'll be more to come on that, I believe. Um Sergeant Cropper, um, possibly get the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, because we'll have the leasing report as well, and um yeah, so, and the other thing that's on our new director of Public Safeties, uh, lists the stuff that he's been working on already is the emergency plan, which is one of the key things in your, in your document there. Um, plus his new, learning his new budget and making recommendations on things that need to be changed, so um, that's plugging ahead. Um unfortunately, there's a bout of, a bout of COVID going around through town, and it has impacted our operations. Um we had our um wrap-up meeting um for the fall's uh stretch of work on Tintina Way with contractors. It was very productive. Um and we did learn, as council members, that we had a letter from uh Terry Zabel about her sewer backup and everything. Well, through this construction, we've learned that her sewer doesn't even come to Tintina Way, it goes to Simpson. And we've never had Simpson freeze up, ever. So the issue is on her property. So anyways, uh operations are dealing with that with her. Uh, there is an option for her to reroute hers, so it's not such a long run. Um, but anyway, so that was something new that we learned. Um, we're also dealing with uh uh Morrison Herschfield and Yessa, and the Water Board and the Department of Environment uh environmental compliance over our water license application stuff that we're working on, and um those of you that were on council five years ago might remember that we were, we had issues trying to get our we had issues trying to get our water license for the twenty five years of when we went to apply for it, and they only granted us five, because they didn't believe the hydrogeological assessment of the lagoon area. And they demanded we drill more monitoring wells, which we did. And we did the geological assessment, submitted it. Um, we thought we've crossed every T dotted, every I, the information in those, in that report, and the data, data coming back from the monitoring wells mirrors the, the hydrogeological assessments going back to nineteen seventy five or seventy six.
Hmm.
But now they've come back and said that they still don't believe it, and that they're, they want us to drill the wells deeper and all kinds of issues, so we've got consultants trying to meet with them and put this to rest.
Basically, we're all that.
Us. Cause it's a regulatory thing, so we're trying to circumvent it, that we don't have to drill more monitoring wells, which is a huge impact on the municipality, um. So, yeah, it's a hurdle that we're trying to cross and put to bed before it becomes an issue. Uh, but it's rather frustrating, because we've spent lots of money and time and energy trying to cross those bridges, but it's one of those things that we've spoken about at A Y C and the C A O's meetings about, you know, we're, we're at that end of the tail, and if the regulators wag it and say you gotta do something, where do we draw the line, right? And, uh, there are consultants who are the same, of the same opinion, like, if they're, they're demanding stuff because they're new and they're haven't done the homework, well, why is it on us, right? But it's trying to cross that because of the fact that our water license, we have to have it renewed, so I don't want to spend all this money redoing a water license, that we're gonna have to renew it, they're only gonna use it for another five years again, so we're just wasting taxpayers' money, so it's a really frustrating process, but we're doing our hardest to get through it. And if it takes lobbying our, our polit- political allies to get something done, then they're gonna do it, but we have, you know, same thing with the public waste drop off area at the, uh, not the public waste op, but our solid waste operating permit, it's been sitting at Yessa for quite a while. And we just keep getting extension emails, so those, all those little things really add up to a lot of time and resources and money when it comes back on us. So anyhow, we're plugging ahead with that. And, uh, yeah, um, uh, so there's your, um, town hall meeting on the twenty seventh. Um.
We're gonna do a whole holiday meeting schedule.
Okay, that you're gonna cover that?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, and, uh, yeah, so, um, haunted house went very well. Um, Halloween dance, uh, was a beyond phenomenal turnout, hundred and fifty people uh, paid admission to go to Halloween dance, which is unheard of. Yes, and our, and our, our rec programmer was the techno DJ for the evening, so yeah, couldn't find a, couldn't find a DJ to come in, so.
Cool.
Um, anyway, so it all worked out, um, at the rec center, you'll see all new faces at the front desk. Uh, we have, um, Mary Rodson's went over from the Northern Light Center, now that season's end, ended, and we also hired Alex and Tiffany, who'll have to help me, but I can't remember his last name.
Axel.
Axel. So, uh, started better as well, and, uh, it's nice to see smiling peo- smiling people at the front desk and working.
Good.
Um, the heatings, the district heat still is not back up and running, their, um, last conversation from Monday was that maybe by tomorrow evening, we might have district heat back up and running. It's been down since August thirtieth.
So.
Starting to get colder.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna ask you about that, um. Just like, whose responsibility is it to fix that, I guess?
Well, it's, it's there, it's, the issue that it's held up right now is that they contracted it out, and then, um, they started, uh, the system got shut down based on their schedule, and then stuff, stuff was backward, pumps were backward.
Atco.
Atco, yes, it's on the Atco side, it's not on our side, so, um. So, yeah, so it, stuff, pumps were backward, they actually flew the pumps up from across the other side of the country from east coast. Uh, and then fittings were missing, and then it's just been a constant, um, chain of events, but, um, in the agreement, um, states that they may or may not provide, you know, be able to provide heat. So, um, we've been really lucky, the weather's been good, um, in between the high school and our boiler at the rec center. Um, we've been holding, we've been holding out, uh, temperature in the buildings, uh, livable. Uh, when we first, when it first turned cold, we had issues, and it was an issue that, um, our system in front of the building was low on glycol, glycol. So once it was filled up, the temperature came up. So, um, so we've been rather fortunate, uh, that it hasn't been twenty or thirty below all the time through, but it'll, it'll be back on, and we'll put this behind us, and and we, we're still, I'm still dealing with the consultants on the scope for the re- the, the backup heating at the building, the new stuff. But we've been lucky, because we've been using, we actually been using the old boiler in the swimming pool, right? Plus we have a backup, uh, boiler from, um, Casque, Casque or G contracting, that we've got pumped into the building as well.
Yeah, cause it's just like random things that broke, just because, like, whatever, or like, cause we have a bunch of a fair amount of money budgeted for, like, upgrades to that system.
Yeah, so.
Like, you think if.
They're, they, that it's on their side, it was part of the upgrade stuff that we're doing.
Okay.
That they were doing, that we improved in our budget. Um, but it's just snowballed from the amount of time that they figured it was gonna take to what it actually transferred.
Cause did I also, like, this, the school's online, right?
Yeah.
Like, so they're.
The schools got boilers, they're using, they're running their own boilers.
Oh, okay, I, I thought I'd heard that they were receiving district heat and that they weren't, so that is.
No, no, the district heat, uh, flows through all the buildings, uh, the school's running off their boilers right now. Yeah, and we did for a little bit when we were having those initial issues. Um, we had the high school supplying heat back to us, which is in our agreement. So, um, so we've been, in between all the parties involved, we're really working together to get it going, and it was a real learning experience, um. You know, it's nice to know that we can cope with the, what we do have, but it's not the perfect system, and that's why in the budget that you guys approved was the new backup heating system for the, uh, for there, and that's what I'm dealing with the consultants on, so, on the design, and then there's a goal for tender. And so I think I'll leave it there until, uh, question period.
Thank you, C A Lockwood, lots going on as usual, um. Yeah, I'll leave all my questions for councillor open forum, and we'll just keep moving on. As the, uh, the agenda, so number seven on our agenda, we have for discussion, the general maintenance and nuisance bylaw twenty three dash zero one. Um, there has been several proposed amendments and comments provided to this from administration and all sources, um. Best way to review this. Maybe I will go, I will, um.
By section?
By section, you want me to go through each one?
With the proposed amendments, or I don't know.
Amendments? Sure.
And sorry, just to clarify, these are the, um, amendments made by admin, these are your suggestions?
Yes. And we've done first reading, we are proposing to have this on the town hall meeting for discussion, for public input. And we will do second reading probably at the next regular meeting, which would be November twenty first. But with the amendments that are made in here are approved, or you guys like these, we can put that on for second reading, and we'll do the town hall meeting, add any other comments from there. Third reading would be in December, if everything goes well. Okay. Um, so I will. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of section two sixty five of the municipal act provides that council may pass bylaws for mi- municipal purposes respecting the safety, health, and welfare of people and the protection of persons and property, municipal services, and improvements on private and public lands, nuisances, nuisances, unsightly property, noise, and pollution, waste on public or private property, and subject to the Highway Act, the management and control of sidewalks, boulevards, and all property adjacent to highways, whether publicly or privately owned.
My only, um, question about that is just, um, the word noise in there, because, um, did away with the, that portion of the bylaw a while ago, so I'm just wondering if that even needs to be in there at this point.
Um.
Or, yeah, I don't know, sorry.
Yeah, and I'll have to do some more research, because, um, I'm saying as you have, I've only just recently reviewed this, so I want to confirm, but there's nothing in here that contradicts with us not having a noise bylaw.
Okay. This seems to be, um, most of them, when you first read them, right, that that's section two sixty five of the municipal act, you can see it, Whitehorse has it. Um, Dawson has it, so, yeah.
That's just the part that says that we're allowed to make bylaws for whatever, that's the part that allows us to do that, so that's why, that says that for every single bylaw, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go to section three for, uh, general provisions and regulations. The town appoints the C A O, Director of Protective Services, and bylaw officer are also referred to as inspectors. To administer this bylaw, uh, perhaps changing inspector to designated officer.
I agree with that.
I do.
And I just, um, I'm sure this is probably obvious, but that it would also be changed in every other section where it says that, yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, where it says to remove that part about the, um, identity cards. I think that, thanks.
Is that coming up here next?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I missed the next line.
Uh, yeah, so, three point zero two, to assist the C A O, Director of Protective Services, and bylaw officer in the administration of this bylaw, inspectors may from time to time be appointed. Right? Okay.
So you wish, oh, that, that'll all be designated officers.
Okay. Suggesting to do a remove, we do have identity cards?
Yeah, we don't, we don't supply staff. And so we'll remove that, that line.
Okay. All right, so everybody's in favor of that, which is great. Number four, right of entry. Uh, each designated officer appointed pursuant to this bylaw may enter into or upon any property within the town at any responsible time for the inspection purposes or in order to enhance or carry out provisions of this bylaw. Good, yeah?
Okay.
Good.
Tiffany, Tiffany, I have heard your copy. You did write in here with reasonable notice, it's one of the, oh, yes, was that one of the chambers you had, and then it's cause I'm so curious.
It does say reasonable time, you have my chromosome, or remove from somebody, sorry.
Reasonable, it says town at any reasonable time. And it would be an inspection, so it would have to be a scheduled inspection.
What would be a reasonable time, though?
Well, it's, 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 it's an inspection, so there's gonna be
Some conversation ahead of that.
As to what that would be.
Yeah, so when I first read that too, I thought it meant that they were just gonna walk up and be like, let us in, and then, um, I thought my comment on the side here is like, is that legal, like, can you just walk up and it's not gonna let you in, like, there has to be like an agreed upon time, and
Yes.
blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
That would be within that town. Anyway, um.
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with everything, otherwise.
Um, I'll just keep going, four point zero zero two, where entrance into or upon any property within the town wa- town is refused, a justice of the peace or judge upon application made on behalf of council, may by order require the occupier to admit an inspector or designated officer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. In order made by a justice of peace, judge continues to enforce until the purpose of which it is made had been fulfilled. So, did I read that right?
Order made.
In order.
Or judge, continue.
Has been fulfilled, it should be.
Yeah, okay. Not had.
I'm.
Real quick, Chris.
It's, it's something to do with the warrant. I don't think it's something, it can just.
Well, we'll look into it deeper, thank you for your comment.
There is the.
Okay, we'll make sure that this, we'll make sure this right of entry section is very clear, and that it is one hundred percent legal, okay? Any person who fails to comply with the justice of peace or judge I guilty of an offense is guilty of
Yeah.
offense meant to match, bare bitch, white horse bylaw.
I'm good with that, just as a pure. Yeah.
And we'll just, we'll make sure that there's some legalities all looked into, make sure that we're not stepping on anything that's not our jurisdiction. Uh, there's just a couple of clarifications as bylaw, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, see, bylaw may approve the application subject to meeting and maintenance certain terms and conditions, which may include, but is not restricted to a public hearing agreement in writing of all properties with one hundred meters of the boundaries of the property of the applicant. Pretty wordy, but.
That's, yeah, so tha- that's the same wordage as if we were, um, any public hearings and stuff, that's regulated that we have to notify everybody within that hundred meter radius.
Okay.
Not just for something unfenced, unhoused, it's just, uh, open, right?
Yeah. The storage, collection, or accumulation of refuse in any structure excepting containers, bins, drawers, shelves, or areas designated for temporary storage of such types of refuse. Okay?
Sounds great.
Okay. So, under section of restrictions. Um, this looks like just a little clerical here for six point zero zero one. Right? Okay, and then, so I'll go on to section number seven, which is added, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, and it's a, uh, snow removal, and there's quite a bit, but I will read it for everybody.
Um, sorry, can I just ask one quick question before you move on? Um, it was just about the part with the broken glass and the bottles and stuff, I maybe I miss, I don't know, I, when I read that, I just thought that that sounded really random. You know, that it's just, I don't know, where it's like.
It's not existing.
Is it really? It's like, to throw bottles?
The block, the block part, the block lettering is in there.
Everything black is existing.
Okay, and then the, and then, I guess I always wonder this, but, um, when you're saying, uh, shall cause or permit that property to become to become or to remain untidy or unsightly, I always wonder, like, who's the judge of that, like, what's the definition of? Sorry.
Unsightly?
It's in the definitions.
Okay. Removed entire eight C section and moved to order to remedy, uh, no, that didn't work.
Yeah, so your worship, the seven O of the snow removal.
Yeah.
That used to be in the traffic bylaw.
Okay.
So it's been incorporated here, I believe, right, Tiffany?
Correct.
Okay, so, so this is a new section to our general maintenance bylaw, section seven, which is snow removal. Every owner or occupier of real property must not place snow removed from private property on public highways, public lands adjacent to a highway, streets, boulevards, or other roadways, so that it impedes the municipality's crew from clearing the streets. This includes snow pushing snow from private driveways or parking lots onto the street or across the street to place snow on boulevards and at intersections or sewer or storm manhole covers, water main valves, or fire hydrants. I believe we should really make sure we're clear on this and make sure that there's, cause there's some difficulties with this, you know, like, there's gonna be people that are gonna need to put snow in certain places that we're gonna have to.
Well, um, unfortunately, your worship, as everybody knows, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars hauling snow away from, that people have been pushing out into the street, right?
And it's also not safe, because even you push it across, you're not pushing all of it across, so then you leave mounds of snow on the road itself, and then, and it's not safe for vehicles to be.
Not everybody does, some people clean it really good, I do.
I'm just saying, but you shouldn't be pushing, you shouldn't, I know, near us across the street either, right? So the reality is, but not everybody does that, and so I guess what's the, it becomes a big safety issue.
That's what's the expectation there, then, if somebody does have, like, a smaller issue, they do have to clear their snow, if they're not able to push it out into the street or or wherever, what's the expectation, like, that they would haul it down to the snow dump, like, are they, are are residents allowed to dump, like, is that
Yeah.
realistic?
Yeah. Um, and same thing, city of Whitehorse is, uh, advertising theirs on the radio right now, and with the same, same restrictions, right?
Okay.
And a lot of, but they don't give me same all, really. I just, I, I'm just asking, like, what the expectation is.
So this came, this, did this section come from something else? The traffic bylaw?
Yeah.
Okay, and this would just make it more um.
It's more, it's, it's, we're trying to refine things into one spot.
Okay.
Um, sorry, are you on the screen part now?
I will read it first, I'll talk about it. A main complaint during winter is the snowpack at the end of driveways that is caused when streets are peeled of snowpack by public works. Do we want something in the bylaw stating that this is a responsibility of the property owner to remove snowpack from driveways?
So where that comes from, your worship, is in the spring, when we peel our streets down, people that have been shoveled or piled their driveways all winter, there could be, depending on the amount of snow and what's packed in their yard, there could be you know, a few inches dropped to the street, or there could be a foot or more dropped to the street, and um so it's, it's uh never any complaint coming in the office in the spring when the streets, when the streets are stripped, but.
So when people are making those complaints, what are they expecting, like the?
They expect for us to go back and and.
And like, clear their driveway out or?
Sweep their driveway so they can have a, a drum drop going down, shave it down. Hmm, which is a lot, like, if we start doing that in every driveway, it's.
But people complain about the trapping of snow too, like, it's, snow just seems to be a big bone of contention period with people.
It's a tough one.
It is, no, for sure, it's, it's, it is. Ten feet of snow.
We do, hundred percent, like, I'm not, yeah, um.
So maybe we'll, we'll definitely bring this up in uh public forum, right, make sure we highlight.
That's a good one, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and get some feedback, and you know, I think most people are gonna be on the uh side of admin to say that it's not an institution's responsibility to shovel the driveways. How are we gonna alleviate that problem in the spring? And i- if it's clear and it's stated in this bylaw that we aren't going to deal with it, it would help admin, but is that what we wanna do? Ask your friends. Okay, and we'll move on to section, we'll move on to section number eight. Uh, highway and boulevard damage, uh it shall be unlawful and contrary to the provisions of this bylaw for any person within the town to damage. Any highway or boulevard, hedge, tree, or shrubbery adjacent to any highway or boulevard. And every person causing such damage shall be liable to the co- for the costs of repairing such damage in addition to any penalty assessed under this bylaw. Or anything erected or maintained adjacent to a highway or boulevard for the purpose of lighting the highway. And every person causing such damage shall be liable for the cost of repairing such damage in addition to any penalty assessed under this bylaw. Is this straight drag over from the uh?
Um, I believe this might be from White Horse, right?
This is, yeah, Connie's recommendation, I can't remember exactly which bylaw, but White Horse or possibly Farrow.
Was there an example that she brought up?
Thank you, that was my next.
We've had issues where um, you know, four wheelers are tearing up the grass on, in Wild Lake Park and running over trees and into flower beds and not even like vehicles besides that, so.
Okay, I was just like, read that quite a few times, and I was like, what? And I was, yeah.
Has happened.
I have the same question for the point.
Yeah, and then, um, the only, the only only other way is going through the R C P as a mischief charge and um go into the courts and it's really, nothing comes out of it, so this is the better avenue.
Okay. Okay, any other comments towards that?
Uh, no.
Okay. No persons shall drive upon and no vehicle shall be allowed on or across grass of any highway or boulevard within the town. Except when necessary to cross part of the highway or boulevard for the purpose of delivering or removal of furniture, household goods, or other little shadows, lake shadows. Uh, in which case planks or sufficient length and width shall be placed over the roadway in front of the building in or from which the shadows or goods shall be delivered or removed. So the damage or injury, injury shall not ensue to the part of the said roadway. And the person reasonable for such transportation of gods and shadows, they'll be liable highway or boulevard not be in good condition. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I was just wondering, you know.
It's just so we don't, we don't want them backing over and on a soft surface or grass surface and making runs.
Again, I'm just asking, if there's been a, any issue with that. Number nine, defacing a property. Every person who in any way removes, injures, damages, defaces, or defingers any public or private building, wall fence, hedge, railing, sign, monument, statue, light standard, or telephone pole in part of whole owned by, owned or maintained within the town by cutting, breaking, painting, or daubing with paint or other substances shall have contravened the provisions of this bylaw and shall be liable for the cost of repairing such damage in addition to any penalties assessed under the provisions of this bylaw. It's a long sentence. But I get it, it's, it's basically graffiti and damage, right? We want some sort of action on it. Um, can we look for some definitions in there that might help shorten that up, or? I get it, I'm surprised, I'm surprised we didn't have anything like them already.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I didn't have any issue with that.
Okay, anybody else? No owner or occupier shall cause, permit, or allow the defacing of property, including graffiti, to be in to go, to be on any surface or structure of their property. Okay, every owner or occupier shall remove from their property any accumulation of graffiti within thirty days of becoming aware of the graffiti. Okay, uh, number ten is house numbering. All owners and occupiers of real property of which a dwelling unit or building has been erected shall display the number assigned to the property at a location plainly visible from the highway upon which the house or building is situated. In case of country residential lots, assigned numbers shall be placed on reflective backgrounds or be or be of reflective materials at least fifteen centimeters high and shall be located within three meters of the highway upon which the house is situated.
It's a highway or road, road, I don't know.
Um, it definition under in the, um, I was asked, roads or highways.
All owners or occupiers of real property shall display the number assigned to the property in any area illuminated by light.
I think this one's currently in the fire bylaw.
You know.
House number, okay.
Yeah. Just memories in the fire by law, right?
Yeah.
And it seems like.
The only issue I like, from my point of view, your worship is under uh zero ten, ten zero two in an area illuminated by light, because uh anybody that's country residential or rural residential like myself, there's no, there's no illuminated lights.
Well, I read that to mean only things that weren't cause it country residential, cause the one before says that it would be on a reflective background, so if you pull up with your lights, you would it would be illum-
Luminate, yeah.
Be illuminated, so I think that, um, I mean, unless you wanna just clearly, like, clarify that that's for things.
I would like, I would really like to meet with the director and, and bylaw just to clarify that.
My question was, yeah, would if you don't have a light, would if it's not possible?
Just should be quite.
Visible.
Make sure it's obvious and reflective or visible, I mean.
Well, cause I mean, there are some, some um, properties in town that I think aren't country residential, but maybe have a longer driveway, so I mean, even if you put the numbers on the house, like, it's still gonna be pretty far away, and so.
Now they need, your worship, they need to be out at the roadway, so.
On your fence, or, yeah.
So an illuminated area out at the end of the driveway is gonna be difficult, yeah, sorry, yeah.
It's the same comment, though, if you read some of the other ones, right, like, there's the same con- concept about house numbering and something reflective.
So, yeah, so your worship will, will look into it and provide feedback.
Okay. Uh, maintenance of fencing and similar structures. No person shall permit or allow a fence situated on real property owned or occupied by them to exist in state of bad repair. Simple. Where the exterior doors, windows, and other openings to vacant, to va- vacant or abandoned buildings or structures are broken improperly fitted or otherwise in disrepair, the owner, property owner or occupier shall board the building or structure as a security safety measure so as to prevent the entrance of unauthorized persons' elements or infestations. Get forward, the boarding required under section eleven oh two shall be installed from the exterior and properly fitted with frames of the opening in watertight manner by nails or screws. Where an owner or occupier of real property has received notice from the town that any part of the property is deemed to be in bad repair, such owner or occupier shall make such repairs to the property as detailed in the notice. Such notice shall require the repair of completed, be completed within a specific timeframe as determined by the designated officer. Whereas persons responsible or are considered to be in default pursuant of section eleven oh four of this bylaw, the town and its workers and others may enter it and effect such repairs at the expense of the persons, so defaulting and the said owner or occupier shall be billed such charges by the town. If such charges are unpaid on thirty, the thirty-first day of December of the same year, they shall be added and form part of their property taxes.
The only thing that worried me about that was the word and others, not at all.
Well, if we hire a contractor on our behalf, I guess that's where it's coming from.
Oh, okay. Should say that, though. I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, it's following a legal protocol, you know, I'm sure it's fine. You would give notice as that
Yeah.
such and such will be at your property.
Yeah.
If you do not do so. Okay, composting, all composting shall be carried out by the owner or occupier of a property in accordance with the following requirements. Composting shall take place only in a container or pile and only on land which a dwelling is located. Composting shall take place to the rear of the building or property and shall be located at least one meter from any property line and at least three meters from ant dwelling unit.
And.
And, not ant.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm like, why are you gonna go for ants? Deck or patio area associated with adjacent property measured from the nearest part of the composting container or pile to the nearest part of the adjacent dwelling deck or patio. Bones, meat, fish, dairy products, fat products, human feces, and other animal feces shall not be placed in a container or pile used for composting. Food waste placed in composting container or piles shall be kept covered with yard waste soil or compost. Composting shall be maintained as not to attract insects, vermin, or animals. Any questions or comments, issues, problem, looks good, okay. Did that come from somewhere? Did you guys use that?
Yeah, that's worded, um, not, it's not in our first bylaws.
It just came from a different bylaw?
Farrow, maybe, I think, has composting.
Okay, great. Uh, I'll read the screen, perhaps, this can be worked into section five. Accumulations prohibited, special permits. Yeah, a lot of repetitive information.
A repeat of everything that was there except for um D, I think. Which I like that part, that I think that should be in there somewhere.
Yeah, it's kind of just in two areas of the bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll clean it up, yeah.
Consolidate them.
And I, yeah, I like the part of the appendix with the fines.
Order to remedy a contravention. Taken from the city of White Horse. The designated officer may issue an order to any person who has contravened this bylaw or to an owner or occupier where a contravention of this bylaw is found. And such person, person shall comply with the order within the time limit specified in the order. Every person who fails to comply with an order commits an an order shall contain at least following information, the name and address of a person on whom the order is served, the day on which the contravention was alleged to be committed or discovered. The address of the property where the contravention is found to took place, reasonable particulars of the contravention. A requirement that the person served shall remedy the contravention and how compliance shall be affected. A prescribed timeframe which the contravention must be redeemed, the consequences of a non-compliance, including the advice that that if that person does not comply with the order within the prescribed timeframe, the town will take action or measure to remedy the contribution, contravention at the expense of the person. The right of the person to appeal the order to counsel within fourteen days of being served with the order. Seems pretty straightforward to me, any questions or comments? Okay, if any person fails to comply with an order within the timeframe prescribed in the order, the town may, by its employees or and others, enter the property and effect compliance at the expense of the person. In addition to any other penalties that may be imposed pursuant to this bylaw, the town may thereafter bill such person for these charges. Review of order by council, a person who receives an order may, by providing written notice to the C A O within fourteen days of being served with the order, request that council review the order. Any notice or order may be served by delivering the notice or order to the person or mailing the notice or order by registered or certified mail to the person's last known post office address. In which case, it shall be deemed to be received for five business days after being mailed. Excuse me.
We wanna remove that?
No.
No.
Let's just get it put in there.
No, I know, like, I mean, like, do you want to be able to review them, though, like, do we want that, like, I don't know.
There's good, there has, uh, in worship, there has to be an appeal mechanism.
Okay.
No, I just, like, you know, I just don't wanna make decisions, like, get like, if we let somebody say, okay, no, that's fine, we won't uh the, your appeal's good, and we won't find you or whatever the consequence is, and the next one comes in, but we do, and then they go, well, why does you this, like, I don't know, I just.
There, I see what you're saying, no, Sir Bertus is that there could be some. Yeah, no, it's not precedence, I think it's more like a uh guideline, basically, that what is valid to bring to council or not. Because there's probably gonna be offenses that are straightforward and clear that
That's what I mean, that.
Cannot be, cannot be appealed.
Yeah.
Cause we don't want everybody who is a, has an offense to come to council.
Yeah.
So we should have some level of.
Where appeals will come, like, some, like, uh.
But I think, but there should be a threshold or some um, somebody that, I guess, the C A O.
Um, I don't know.
Think about it, cause it's gonna come back again, okay? But there should be filter, per se. Fair enough. Enforcement and penalties, every person who contravenes any provisions of this bylaw or neglects or refrains from doing anything required to be done by any provision of this bylaw shall be guilty of an offense punishable or summary on summary conviction and liable to a fine not exceeding five thousand dollars or a voluntary fine under the Summary Convictions Act issued in respect to an offense specified in Schedule B and attached here to and forming part of this bylaw. Anybody question, comments? Okay, so Schedule B will have a uh detailed fine amounts for consideration. Uh, any outstanding fines, fees, or costs, including, without limiting the generality of the foregoing, those costs incurred by the town after a person fails to comply with an order which are unpaid by an owner or occupier, may be charged against the person's property and may be recovered in the same manner as tax may be. May be charged against the person's property and may be recovered in the same manner as tax may be collected or enforced. Under the municipal act. Issuance of a notice is not a prerequisite to issuing, issuing an order, issuing. Of a notice or order is not a prerequisite to proceeding with prosecution pursuant to this bylaw. General interpretations, the invalid, invalidity. Of any section, sentence, or provision of this bylaw shall not affect the validity of any other part of this bylaw that can be given effect. Without such invalid part. Thomas, was that stolen from somewhere?
That's the city of Whitehorse, so it's basically like, if you find something invalid within this bylaw, it doesn't mean everything else is invalid.
Right. Repeal or previous legislation. So we're gonna repeal bylaw ten dash thirteen, including any amendments. And this bylaw shall come into force upon the final passing thereof. Okay. Some big changes and I've seen some valid, um. Some good amendments added. Thank you, admin, for all that. Um. We definitely have to take this to the public. Make sure that there's some good conversation about it. Um, we will have it at the town hall meeting, but we'll do second reading at the next regular council meeting.
So is this already on, like, with the amendment stuff on my?
Uh, no, because it's just been presented.
All right, I see that.
Is everybody happy with that?
Thank you.
Okay, that was a lot of work, thanks. Okay, moving right along. Great on the agenda, twenty twenty-three capital budget amendment. Budget amendment by law twenty twenty-three dash zero one three. Um, pursuant to provisions of section two twenty of the municipal act provides that council made by bylaw amend a bylaw of resolution. And whereas pursuant to the provisions of section two thirty-nine of the municipal act, provides that a council may establish a bylaw. Cetera to authorize the verify expenditures which vary from an annual operating budget or capital budget. Now, therefore, the council of municipality of town Watson Lake is open meeting duly assembled hereby enacts the following. Uh, this bylaw may be cited as the capital bylaw amendment twenty-three dash zero one three. The total revenues and total expenditures of the twenty twenty-three capital budget are increased to. Four million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars with the amendments as follows. A decrease to the amount taken from own funds in the amount of nine thousand dollars with the expenditure line of administration lighting. Removed and an increase of own funds for the ski chalet lighting project. A decrease to income line Y T G special projects in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, five hundred dollar. Eighty-five thousand five hundred for the removal of administrative administration lighting and ski chalet lighting projects. An increase to income line gas tax in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-six thousand. An increase to expenditure line lift station spare pump in the amount of forty thousand. An increase to expenditure line landfill crawler in the amount of seventy-two thousand. An increase to expenditure line public waste drop-off area of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. An increase to expenditure line recre- recreation center roof repairs in the amount of thirty thousand. The estimates for the funds acquired and applied for. For. The four-year capital program attached here to is appendix A. Is hereby amended and adopted by council and will form part of capital expenditure by twenty-three dash two. This bylaw shall come into force and effect upon final passing thereof. Questions, comments, discussion, please?
Just fine, um, so this is stuff we've already approved, like, we've already approved the increases, we're just improving, approving the, uh. Like on the approved capital, but like the difference.
Yes, of what we've already approved. Yes, your worship, so we ran into an issue where, uh, energy solutions or energy rebates, um. Uh, ran out of money, so there was no money to. Um, administration lighting, and unfortunately, it was after we had already issued the. The go-ahead for the ski chalet. So, um, ski chalet lighting went ahead, but we. Were using the money that was set aside for the admin building and for the chalet to pay, pay that off. Uh, so that, like, that project was already in progress, so we paid that, um. And then, uh, lift station pump, um, we had it budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars in the capital budget. And all estimates have come back in between twenty and thirty-five thousand dollars more.
Yeah.
So that's hence the reason that we put forty just for safekeeping. Um, landfill crawler, um. We've, we just, uh, rejigged it a bit so we can move money around, so being it's, uh. It'll be, uh, Canadian community, Canadian community build fund money. We just, instead of using our own funds, we just jumped it up seventy-two thousand to keep money in our own account. And, um, and then the public waste drop-off area, um. Which wasn't in, it was, uh, in the previous year's gas next one, and, and now that we've actually got legitimate contract. That's the amount now. And then the other one is the rec center roof was, uh, there was extras due to putting in pre-draining, uh, drains in the roof. So to mitigate, um, uh, water overflow and stuff and weight on the roof, so that's thirty thousand dollars. So those are everything other than the. Uh. All that has been before council.
Yeah, like, we've already approved that with door, there's, this is just the formality of.
Formality to, to satisfy the auditors.
Yeah, no, that's what I thought, I was just making it clear for everybody, just to know that.
What is a crawler?
That's like, uh. Like a cat.
Okay.
Technically, this is a committee of the whole, so.
Exactly, so this is just for your information.
Okay.
It'll come back to, for the meeting on the twenty.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, twenty-first, per, per meeting, so.
I just feel like we, and maybe I'm just not remembering, but. That we haven't had to pass a bylaw like this before, moving all this stuff around, is this just because of the amount involved?
Yes, if it, in the past, most of our stuff's been under, um. Last year, no, we didn't have any.
Yeah, we didn't.
Did we? Yeah, there was.
But I just.
It's not as big, it's usually individual items.
Yeah. And this year was lots because of the fact that the way the economy's gone and the way things have played out, right?
But we've already approved this individually, yeah. We have, yes.
Changed.
It's a regulatory, uh, thing for us to have it squared off before the end of the year.
No, for sure.
Any more questions, council?
Split screen would be really nice.
So this is lighting, sorry, if you just said this, those are lighting projects that we didn't, we didn't receive the funding for, those projects are just being put on ice for now.
Uh, while the, the admin building was put on ice.
Yeah.
The ski chalet was already.
No, 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 I heard that part, but the, the other one's up top here, that.
And what, what lighting are you guys upgrading?
Um.
Outside?
No, internal, uh, we were, it was, uh.
They're all.
Retrofit.
Mm-hmm, all of the lights?
All the lighting in this building, but until that funding that comes available, then it's on ice.
And does that roll over again, do we know?
We have no idea. Depends on the next federal budget.
Are you making an L E D? Like, I just wondered what was wrong with all the lighting, I'm not sure.
Well, it's, we're trying to save energy and, and power bill.
L E D, L E D, that's a great, okay, that's kind of what I thought, but.
Everybody okay? Some clarity on that? Any more questions, councilor Andrew?
No, thanks.
I'm good, thank you.
Counsel, get?
I'm good.
Okay. We'll move right on to number nine, which is just our holiday meeting schedule. I asked to have this on here, so we have quite a few meetings coming up. Um, did we confirm a meeting time for Henley?
I mean, you put that there, um, so we did, uh, that date does not work now. Um, he is asking if. Council could be available this Friday, November tenth, from two thirty to three thirty.
No, honestly, I'm not here. I'm heading out of town. Honestly, like, any.
She did come back and say otherwise, we'd be happy to discuss.
I mean, other dates.
We can, we can ask your worship, we can ask for a date later on.
The only way I can make the date work, it's an hour trigger, it's after five thirty.
Not, okay.
I realize he's in different time zones, so.
Well, yeah, I believe that two thirty, three thirty is like five thirty his time, right?
Yeah, so.
But we can ask for a later, a later time in the month or end of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe we'll invite him down for the community dinner on the seventh, for December.
That'd be nice.
There you go. So December seventh is the community dinner?
That is correct, your worship.
Okay, and is council invited to the town of Watson Lake Christmas party?
Yes, of course, and that is December sixteenth. And the December seventh community dinner, that's the one that, um, we serve, mayor, council, and myself.
What time do we need to be there?
Um, I would say for five.
Dinner's. And this other one? Thank you.
Okay, so then we have, um, our town hall meeting, which is November twenty-seventh. We have a, one more regular meeting in November for the twenty-first. And then if we get into December, we also have. Both meetings, so December fifth and December nineteenth. And then the other one I was going to ask about was January second. Because admin will be away, it'll be a pretty busy week between the twenty-fifth and the thirtieth. We could postpone the December second to the ninth. And then have one on the.
Sorry, so we have a meeting on the, um, fifth, right?
Fifth and the ninth.
And the nineteen?
Yeah.
Are we keeping those?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and then you're talking about the second, right?
January, yep.
Yeah.
I am in favor of moving that meeting.
Tonight.
Sure.
Anytime.
Okay.
Never works for you.
Let's do that.
So we'll just do the ninth and sixteen, right?
Yep.
Back to back.
Yep.
Or the twenty-third, because we got five Tuesdays that month.
Um, from administration, I would really appreciate, appreciate two weeks in between.
Sure, so the twenty-third, right?
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise, we're gonna.
It'll be good.
Sorry, I would just, uh, we need a, a budget meeting.
Okay.
That we wanted to pick a date for as well.
Sure. Right, so this is the night? Eight? And then the twenty-third.
Yeah. Checks.
You guys, which dates, which dates are good for? Uh, we need to do a budget meeting.
Actually, weekends are horrible.
And before the town hall meeting, right?
Hmm, preferably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next week ideally.
Next week or the twenty-something.
Um, what about? So, don't, don't, don't.
You propose something.
I'll vote like the seventeen, the twentieth. Or the twentieth Friday or Monday.
Friday?
Or Monday, I, or like Sunday, I don't know.
Twentieth, good.
Twenty, twentieth, no. Twenty, twentieth is a Monday, yeah.
That's what you're thinking, November twentieth for.
Cause then it's before a regular meeting too, right?
Five forty-five.
Well, we could do it at six, or seven, or eight, seven and ten, and.
You okay with that, Lauren? That work for you?
Okay, so the recap.
Gee.
Ready? Yeah, I don't have a handly meeting.
No handly meeting, right?
Nope. Uh, regular meeting on the twenty-first. Um. November twenty-seventh is the town hall.
November twentieth.
Twentieth is budget, right?
November twentieth is budget.
Right.
Can't even read my own writing. Um, then we have dinner. On the fifth.
No. Town meeting on the seventh, or fifth, sorry.
And then a regular meeting on the nineteenth. And then we moved our January dates to the ninth and the twenty-third.
Nineteen.
And then for. Danina and Cam and myself, A Y C, December. First, second.
Correct.
In Whitehorse.
And myself, um. Part of my management staff, well, Tiffany, Glenn and myself are in meetings with the Yukon government on the thirtieth.
Okay. So. Um, this is a ga- committee of the whole. So, uh, a chance for the gallery to, uh, ask any questions, comments regarding our meeting. Um, I'll start with the gallery. Roy, you're good?
Good.
All right, thanks for sticking it up.
Oh, yeah.
Six o'clock.
And that's where we do that again.
Currently, I'm.
Good, I just remind you that the internet in there is. Always uncooperative.
True.
So if we're doing any Zoom.
We have, we've gone to fiber internet in there now. And we've got new internet in that building.
Okay. It's sorry, six P M.
Yep. Anything else, Ruth?
Yeah, um. One thing that. I want to talk to, like, this. But I think you, when you're doing your budgets, you should really think about not. Buying anyone. I think, wherever you want to buy a truck. And then, well, it's gonna put that money in the baby. Part. Because our streets are terrible. And. Last time Dr. Hanley was here, I took a virtual. I took him for a tour of the, of the properties that were not. Like the L F N properties in the.
Can you, can you come forward? They can't hear you online. Can you come up by the speaker, please?
He comes here. Hang on, my mic right here.
You gotta start over then?
Yeah. On what? Built on the roads.
Roads, okay.
So, um, last time Hanley was here. Doctor Hanley was here. I had, he came over for a visit to our house, and then I took him for a tour. And what I did was I showed him what properties were not, um. Were the L F N properties in the Bellevue. Then I took him where the subdivision, new subdivision is gonna be. And I took him around different places. And I did hit every bump I could find. With a little speed, because the roads are terrible and they're. I thought he should, should see what we have, but I also think it's your responsibility as council people. That you. Really think hard about whatever new equipment. There's some business people here that are making payments on pro- on equipment. And. Sure, you found funding for it. And you buy some equipment, but that's now on your. Uh, repair and maintenance, when, but those people could have made a loan payment or. And one, one month loan payment or something. So I think that you have to realize there's people here that are paying the taxes from town. And if it's something that their business can do, then we, you should stay out of it. So anyway, that's just something for, that I was thinking about. Um, we just did a big travel and. Um, I think that's, I know that. Denise is quite often about the beautification, but. You know, you travel in one little village and then you go to another and whatever, and you see places that are really. I mean, it is, when they're attractive, you want to stay there, you wanna have lunch, you wanna shop, all that type of thing. So I think that's something also that is really good. And I am very proud of you guys that you got that subdivision, because I know our town can just only improve by having places for people to live. So.
Thanks, Ruth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We always appreciate your comments. I see that Patty's. We always appreciate your comments. I see that Patty's it chomping at the bit.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Patty.
Hey, I heard you um. Or someone talking about the uh lots that are gonna go for sale. And I thought I heard you say that they would not. Be for sale in the spring of twenty-four, can you just clarify that?
That is correct, um. Uh, work is gonna start on the, well, there's no work, more, no more work going on on that subdivision this winter. Um, the contracts um. Will roll out in the spring, they've already been issued, but uh, the slated for having the work completed by next fall. So um, lots potentially will go on sale next fall. Uh, so then development could start in the spring of twenty-five.
Well, that's great, isn't it?
No.
Okay. And no, no, I, I was being facetious there.
Okay, okay, just checking. Checking, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I've been, I've been listening to the government brag about those lots that they're doing in Watson Lake. So. I'll, I'll raise it with them.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, um, yeah, I mean, it's not gonna change anything, but, but I'm gonna raise it anyway, because I'm, it really ticks me off. So, um. The other thing I wanted to ask was about this nuisance bylaw and where I'm gonna be able to find it to read it.
Um, we will have it, well, I can have Tiffany email it to you, but uh, we're gonna post it on the website as well. For review.
Okay, oh, well, an email works great for me, uh, if Tiffany can do that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
And otherwise, thank you, and I'll see you on Saturday.
Thanks for coming out.
Oh, yes, we forgot about Remembrance Day.
Yes. November eleventh. Community Hall. Eleven o'clock.
Uh, doors open eleven, at ten thirty. Uh, ceremony starts at ten forty-five, so please be on time.
That's a community hall, not a, the building here.
Community hall.
Okay.
And Colleen has no.
Can you read the comments though, because that's two texts.
Uh, she says, um, did the meeting? Okay, no, it's. Uh, did the meeting with the House of Wolves take place and what are the next steps?
Yes, it did take place, and we have a tripart agreement drawn up and we're waiting for signatures from the chief.
Um, has mayor council had an opportunity to officially meet with the Art First Nation Council? Uh, since Ben, uh, just you answered the question because they were in the meeting uh, with House of Wolves with us and David. Um, next one is if the town of Watson Lake works with L F N first Casca. They're definitely involved in the fire wildfire protection. You all really need to talk. And then the next one is congratulations, Joey. And then who owns the skateboard park graffiti central, well. That's sort of one that's. Fall, unfortunately falls under us, although, although it's on Y T G property. And then uh, can, uh, next one's a question, can charges be added to property, the property tax bill legally?
Yes.
Uh, yes, it is, it's up to, that's part of the miss block. And then thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thanks, Colleen, yep.
Yes, Ruth.
Um, I thought I saw Dr. Stone's notice about a public meeting. And it's on property that isn't.
Oh, a public hearing.
A public hearing, yeah, but it's on. Property that isn't.
No, it's, it's on the existing lot, the one right across from Brian Nolan, the old C B C Jerry Ammons lot. That corner lot of the corner of Francis and Eighth.
All turned around, eh? Okay, I think that's all for open forum unless Jordan Stackhouse has something to add for the open forum.
Uh, no, your worship, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um. Any more comments from council open forum?
A lot of the stuff that I wanted to ask was addressed at some point in this meeting today, so um, this is short. Um, I was just wondering about, um, usually we pass a bylaw to cover the um. Nonprofit ta- uh, tax grants, and I feel like we haven't done that this year.
Or, yes, you did.
It wasn't in the. When did we do that?
Um. Nonprofit.
Because we would have had to make an amendment when we approved that health and health thing the other day, I guess it's kind of getting it. We have not done that, we have not passed on this year, I went through every folder on.
Really?
Yeah. Because when they first wrote to us asking us to like review that, I remember thinking, oh, well, that's not just as simple as us saying, no, we have to then amend this bylaw that we passed. But we hadn't done that yet, so that, okay, well, I guess it's really good timing, I guess, and we haven't done it since, so.
So. I must have missed it while I was away.
No, I think the original bylaw was passed if health and health wasn't included in it, right? Actually, I can look it up, I keep track of all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Swearing to council.
It did. Tell you right now.
Yeah, because I remember it coming to council. You guys got all the, all this.
I think I went through every single one of these folders, but I mean, I have been wrong before, so.
Also, the council open forum.
So anyway, I guess, um, sorry, just one last note to that, um, because last year, the thing closes end of July, end of June. And then usually by July or beginning of August, we pass it, because that's what we did in twenty twenty-two, and that didn't happen, so I mean, it was late this year, and then, um, I just feel like it. Again, unless I'm wrong, but. I just wanted to.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Have a, a quick in camera, so.
Question, just to follow up, Cam, you were gonna follow up with somebody. I'd ask about the stop sign coming from First Casca. Um, that heartland, I guess it is, onto the dump road. Who put stop signs there?
Um, there is.
Not the highway, hopefully they merge onto our road.
Yeah, I.
We're gonna ask, you, you were gonna ask somebody about that.
Yeah, I, I met with highways, but, and we talked about various locations. Uh, they were supposed to give back to me with those kind of answers, but um. Yeah. I will still follow up on that, because they never did respond about a few other site locations.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Watson Lake's newest townie.
Yeah, we have a motion to go in camera, yeah, so can I have a motion to go in camera, please? I like motion going camera.
I'll second that.
Council Bertis, council Henshaw.
Thank you.
Sure, just one second.
I'll make a motion to come out of camera.
Thank you, council Henshaw, thank you, council Paquette. On favor. Do adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Henshaw, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.